Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton for Tuesday, March 29th, 2016. First order of business, salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. Approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
I will second it. All in favor? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor? Department heads, committee chair updates.
I've got a lot of inquiries on the road postings in the last week or so. I made some phone calls in nearby towns, Lebanon, Berwick, talked to Dicky Goodwin over in Chapley, Sanford. Sanford's unposting tomorrow, Lebanon's already unposted, Wells, everybody's unposting, Chapley's unposting, sounds like the end of this week from what Dicky was saying. So I'm gonna be pulling my posted signs here, probably tomorrow.
Okay.
So I believe the frost is out, looking pretty good. It's been a pretty good year. So, and let's see, one thing I like to address, I talked to Michelle on Monday? I don't know. Today's Tuesday, right? Maybe it was Friday. Maybe it was Friday. And we have an overage in one of our lines. And before we start spending out of this line, I just want to get the permission from the Selectmen. What we've gotta do is, we're over on a salt budget, but we have plenty of money in our salt sand plowing, not salt sand, our plowing budgets. So Michelle said that we can pull out of that line item with your approval. Okay? So my suggestion is, I think we're like $7,200 over on the stockpile right now. Splitting that between both districts and then anything additional after that would be bought by the district that's purchasing it. That way there, I really don't want to go to town meeting with an overage after the winter that we've had. So I just need the approval from you guys to do that. So.
So let's hear from Scott next on it.
Yes, I was well aware that we are over budget on salt sand material. David's last order, which I didn't get the call on that one usually, he's been pretty good, called me all winter, that's the one that actually put us over the outage. So, I mean, I agree what he's doing, but I want to say up until this date, any salt that's been bought comes split evenly because it is the town's material.
So you wouldn't have any issues in pulling out of your budget as well to move around and do what we're gonna do? Jennifer?
Thank you. Just caution the board, before you make any decisions, just let me touch base with the treasurer because the chairman did inquire as far as what could be pulled from where and I had gotten a little different information, not saying that David's right, wrong, or otherwise, but just give me a chance to speak to Michelle before you make any decisions.
Yep.
This has been done in the past. It was done back in 2010, I believe. We had the same problem. Of course, the budget was a lot less then, but this date here, I've got around $26,000, $27,000 still in my plowing and sand and I believe Scott's got a little bit more than that. And I just think it looks, it's not gonna look good going to town meeting like that.
Right.
And, but I've been doing the salt ordering for the last seven years and, you know, the way that we're doing it, it's hard to keep track of what's going on. It's a little bit of a frenzy and we've gotta come up with a new system at some point. And, but at this point, this is, that's all I'm trying to do is just try to diffuse the situation and make it right. So while I'm up here, I got a basketball practice I'd like to go to.
You don't need to speak on any of my items, I'm all set.
I'm just gonna, the salt sand building, I'd like to get started on that Thursday. So, and other than that, road posting's coming off tomorrow for my side, I don't know when Scott's doing his.
Any thoughts on that, Scott?
I was gonna actually wait till probably Thursday night, catch the weather, 'cause we're supposed to have some really cold, cold weather. I'm gonna see how long that prolongs for next week, but I was thinking Friday, if we're gonna have like four days of global freezing for next week, I might hold them for another week.
Okay.
But I'm just going by what everybody else is doing.
Yep.
Okay? And I don't believe there's anything on here that is...
We'll talk to, we'll talk to the treasurer and see what her thoughts are, I'd wanna talk to her anyway before I make a decision, so.
Yeah, definitely. I just, I'm just making the suggestion.
Sounds great.
So clear this up hopefully by the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Any other department heads? I know the fire department right now is out on a building fire, so they won't be here Anyone else? Any other department heads? Anything else, Scott? Go right into old business, I guess. Abandoned properties.
The abandoned properties, we still have the two, really no updates, they both got court dates, one for May and one for July. Ken did notify us that we were able, it looks like one of them's being sold to Ina Butter and they have asked us for all legal fees to date, so it looks like they'll be working that into the closing.
Okay.
And the fees associated with not cleaning it up, so.
Okay.
Pending.
Sure. MMA action letter.
I did speak to Dave earlier today and with his permission, I called American Security. And I spoke to Lance as well. Lance's original recommendation says that activate, monitor the existing fire and security alarm, and I basically asked him if he could force us to put a security system on there. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I mean, it should be a town decision. He did say that he would recant that and he would like to see at least a fire monitor over there.
Okay.
So American Security is coming over this week to give us a price on what that's gonna cost and then I'll bring it back to you.
Okay.
Dave has indicated that he's working on the other two and hopefully they should be done soon.
Great. Firefight EMT paramedic applications.
So I sent you guys a final packet that both Dave and Rick have okayed. It really didn't have a lot of changes, just some formatting, and we did add the actual job application that the treasurer gave us on the back. Couple of the lines that I wanted to make sure that met what you were looking for from last time. Have you ever been convicted of a felony or do you have any pending charges against you? And are you on deferred disposition, are you on a deferred disposition agreement in any court in any state?
Good addition.
So that was added.
Yep.
Other than that, it's just a basic application for employment. They have approved the entire packet for the firefighter, paramedic, so we'd like to get advertising on that right away.
Along with the same wording in that?
Same wording.
That, the wording?
For the job application?
Yep.
I didn't ask them about that because that's a town application.
Okay.
I mean, that's gonna go whether it's one of a road guy or a fire guy.
Yep.
The whole, she'll replace us in all of the packets.
Great.
And in some positions, it's okay if you're a felony, it's not this one.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay.
So we're all set to advertise and move forward? I emailed it to you guys to review?
Yep, you all set with that, Bill?
Yep.
Okay. Good. Yep, move forward with that. Winter sand salt shed, Dave kind of touched on that, so I think we're...
Starting on Thursday, got the permit?
We're all set on that one. Jim Door?
Can I just ask, did you ever agree on a floor?
Floor?
Floor? The floor of the sand shed?
Oh.
Oh, the asphalt.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we just said it's gonna be asphalt.
Right. I know you guys have gone back and forth, so.
Yeah, no, there's no reason, I don't see any reason to put, make it a concrete foundation building.
Yeah, I just wonder what you ended up with.
Concrete doesn't like the salt, anyway.
No, it doesn't, actually, yeah. Yeah, even the...
Well, of course, someone will be looking at it, so I just wanted to update.
Yeah, no, definitely do the hot top. So. Jim Door?
David has indicated that the door has been ordered, it's just a standard door. And he says he's going to put it on. And I just wanted to remind the board that we are, you know, with our maintenance projects, we're gonna continue to alternate, try to call each one of them. So Scott's on my to-do list, if he's got any guys that wanna work a few hours, I've got some minor maintenance projects for them.
Lobby Clerks Office Renovation Walk Through Update.
I can introduce Mr. Fisk. Jim, come on up! So, as you...
Podium, please.
I think I mentioned last week, we had a mandatory walkthrough in which Mr. Fisk was the only one that showed up. The timing didn't really work perfectly for him, so I came to you guys last week to kinda say, you know, how do you feel about Jim overseeing the project and being the general contractor, but using our maintenance employees, the gentleman that did the siding, to do the work under his, under his control. They're all town employees, so we're gonna be paying them, we're gonna be cutting all the checks, so he'll be our only subcontractor that we're gonna pay and he's got the insurance and everything that we need for that. So this all, of course, is contingent on the April 5th vote, but what you asked for last week was a breakdown of the $25,000. So I was just hoping that we could go through that with you and get your approval.
Sure.
I seem to have lost my own copy.
Yeah, mine have lost my own copy too.
Did you take it while I wasn't looking?
I did.
You're awesome, thank you. Share with Ann. Do you wanna kinda just walk us through where you're getting this $25,000 and kinda which direction you're heading in?
Yeah, sure, as soon as I, I might have to take back one of my things, though.
Did you? I thought I had three or four of them.
Yeah, I did. Here's one. Okay, I get it. Yeah, anyway, the problem we're having in trying to figure this all out is that these guys are working by the hour. I haven't worked with them before, so I don't know exactly what their speed and capabilities are. And the other thing we have is that a lot of the stuff that we're going, we're really kinda trying to get to the demo stage in this whole thing because once we get to the demo, we're gonna really find out what this is gonna cost. But the problem we're having is that we're not gonna have to go in there and rip down every ceiling and rip out every piece of sheet rock. I think what we can be a little more selective of what we really have to get into, however, when we do start getting into some stuff, we rip out sheet rock and it turns out we have to do reframing or something like that, well, then we gotta roll with the punches on that. But I'm pretty confident that, you know, I've kinda figured worst-case scenario on most of this stuff, like for instance, the demo, I had three days for two guys. You know, we've gotta rip up carpet, we've gotta rip up all the flooring and all of that, there's gonna be underlayment that might have to be replaced and this, you know, as soon as you start ripping out sheet rock and whatnot, you have to follow through with everything underneath it, so. Then when we get into the framing stages, it was the same thing, three days for two guys. And most of that, like I say, it might turn out that we don't have to get as involved in framing as we're thinking about, you know, there's really just one wall that really has to be built around the new tax collector's office separating the lobby. And involved in that are some mechanical electric shutters that actually come down and isolate the office from the lobby when tax collector's offices isn't open, but the lobby still can be. So that's kinda what we're trying to do. Same thing with the ceiling tile. When we get into the ceilings, I was noticing when we were in there yesterday that the ceiling tile in Jennifer's further over office is actually, not the ceiling tile's in rough shape, but all of the grid and all of that system is really fine. So, you know, a lot of the labor in this would be like ripping down all of the grid and then having to go and re-put it, put it all back up again. We might be able to save like $400, $500 right off the bat if we just stay away from all the grid work and just put in new tile. And that goes for the hallway and it goes for a lot of situations, but there are, there's certain areas where when you're coming into the lobby, we're trying to make the hallway and the lobby one room, so by doing that, we're gonna be committed to a certain extent. The other thing, when we get into some of all of this painting and flooring and all that stuff, the vinyl floor or whatever kind of floor that we decide to put in the lobby goes right through the whole place. It goes through the hallway, it goes into the bathrooms, it goes into the lobby. So I actually figured in to have the bathroom floors replaced. I mean, it's really the, it's the right time to do it.
Yep.
And, you know, yeah, it might involve plumber coming in for, you know, a couple hours and pulling the toilets out, but I think it's well worth it. And one of the problems that we've seen in there is that for some reason they, well, I think I know the reason, but I mean, they put down the new inlay floor and they left the baseboard, so now all of the floor is peeling up all the way around and if they had put the baseboard down on top of it, it probably would've held up a little better commercially. Part of the problem is it really gets pounded commercially. And, you know, people just, you know, they're coming right in from the weather, so. We're trying to reuse as much stuff as we can. There's a door with a combination lock on it, we're gonna be saving that door and just relocating it. All the windows, obviously, are gonna be left. There's very little exterior things to do. We've talked about it with Ken and we kind of agree that there was a renovation job that came through here, what was it, 15, 20 years ago or something? So a lot of things were updated. I mean, there is insulation in the wall, so it's not like, you know, boy, we better take that sheet rock off because there's nothing under it. We know there is. And also when we get in down to the electrical and the HVAC, we're trying to use the same ductwork and furnace and all of that and just basically relocating registers. You know, we're not really adding any space, it's just being rededicated. And one of the problems they've had is a very cold hallway and we're gonna kind of address that situation and we're kinda concerned when we open that cold hallway up into the lobby, whether the lobby's heat will, you know, redistribute or whether we might have to go and regroup with something. We're not really sure about that, but that's kinda the whole process, I think, you know. We gotta get the sheet rock off the walls and we're really gonna find out where we are. And then I could probably go and give you a pretty nailed-down price after that, but until that, you know, we roll with the punches, I think. But I am glad that you're into an hourly situation because I think, you know, trying to give a price on a renovation job is not the easiest thing to do and it's just, someone takes the risk, so, you know.
Yep.
Now no one's taking the risk.
Yeah.
We're just dealing with what we deal with, comes along, so.
I think you'll be happy with the, with the two guys that did the siding on the outside. I mean, they, our cap and is they know what they're doing.
Well, I worked with Dan off and on in the past, so, yeah, he, we have a good understanding and I think, no, he's definitely capable.
Oh, yeah.
And I think it's his son that he's bringing in as a laborer.
Right.
So between the two of them, the rates are good and fair and I think that, you know...
And the son is the one that helped them all summer.
You get a good day's work out of him, for sure.
Yeah, I think with you overseeing it, I think it's, I think it's a good way to go.
The two of us, right, Jim?
Yep. And we're gonna get some free time out of Ken, too.
Yes, we're working on that.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So any questions? So now we just wait for April 5th and look for the voters who'll come and support it?
And see how it goes and, yeah, I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a good way to go. I think it's a well thought out and I think it's a good, a good plan to, how to spend the money, you know.
Do you, do you think we would require any more presentation paperwork for that next meeting? Is there, is there anything that's gotta go up on a bulletin board or how is this gonna be handled?
Well, it's, so it's the school, school budget with one municipal article. I mean, it's hard to say. We've gone before the Warren and Finance and they didn't really have any questions, they were very supportive. It's just a matter of the voters that turn out what they may or may not need, but, I mean, I think that...
What we have is adequate.
Certainly, what we have is more than...
Okay. Yeah, I'd say if you...
I think it's plenty, but...
Pin that up on the way in.
Yep.
You know, let people look at it.
Yeah, put it right in there.
Yeah, yeah, I would think that would be sufficient.
I think this is perfect.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else on that, Jennifer, you wanna talk about?
No, I just wanted to make sure you guys were good, you knew where, kinda knew what the breakdown was and...
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think it's a well, well thought out way of doing it, so. Foreclosed properties and tax sale.
So last week you guys asked me to send you an address to a property so you could consider it as your Blueberry Hill Tower relocator. Did you get a chance to look at that property?
I have not been, but maybe after this meeting, I'm gonna run right down there.
That's where the fire is.
I am, exactly, and it's right next door, so.
The fires, two houses down.
Yes.
So I haven't, I guess until you kinda give me guidance on that one, I don't wanna write up one tax sale for the other property and, I mean, neither, I figure we're doing both and...
Yeah.
So, we're just waiting.
Yep.
And I do have a couple of people that have inquired about one of the properties on H Road, so.
Okay, great. Nomination papers correction.
Correction on the nomination papers. So for the last few weeks, we have been advertising nomination papers and what was available, they've only been available since March 28th, today being the 29th, it's 11 days later. There is, we have had no one take out papers for school committees, so I've run it by legal that we're fine as far as our advertising. So we still have one Selectman necessar oversee over the poor for the three-year term. We have one Road Commissioner District North, three-year term, no changes there. We have the one school committee member, three-year term, no change there. What was missing from the original nomination paper was a one-year school committee member. So you had a school committee member, Diana Pettis, who was elected for a three-year term, which would've ended in June of 2017. She resigned midterm and Amanda Cobb was appointed by the school committee, that's how the law works, if there's resignation on school, the school committee appoints. But when they appoint, they're only allowed legally to appoint until the next town meeting, not through the remainder of the term. So Amanda Cobb's term, her appointment was only good through June of 2016. So there is a one-year term that needed to be added to this ballot, okay? So Pettis went through 17, she resigned, Cobb got a one-year, so this is the one-year remainder.
Okay.
So, that is our correction and we've advertised it everywhere, but like I said, as of now, we haven't had any school committee takers, so.
Okay.
Not feeling too bad about the mistake.
Okay. Yoga request from last week.
So the board heard from Suzanne Chadbourne and you instructed me to contact Main Municipal. This is the email that was sent, the Board of Selectmen asked me to pose the following question to you. An individual has come before them asking if she could provide yoga, she has her own insurance, to the townspeople for a fee or suggested donation. Here is a link to the only policy we have governing the use of the town hall. I sent them your policy. The real question here is that if she is not a nonprofit, do they have the right to waive the fee or should they adjust the policy saying that they have the right to reserve, to waive it for profit or nonprofit? Because if you look at your town hall policy, it clearly says nonprofit in there. Also, is this something they should allow, whether she pays the fee or not, should we allow a business to come into our building and make a profit off a town building? Dear Jennifer, Acton's use of town hall policy expressly states only events which are strongly, which strongly says functions are occasional, such as wedding, receptions, family reunions, parties, and so forth. It does not appear to envision ongoing or regular use of the facility by the same individual or organization. If the yoga instructor is proposing anything more than a one-time demonstration class, in my opinion, her use would fall outside of the policy as presently written. Even if she proposes only a one-time class, she is not nonprofit, so the board has no authority under the current policy to waive the fee. Whether the policy should be amended to authorize waiver of the fee for users other than nonprofit is a policy matter which I express no opinion in. Whether the policy should be amended to permit ongoing or regular use of the facility by a same individual or organization, especially if the use is profit, she says, in my opinion, such a change would have a substantial input from the voters and the town's insurance company, so. Basically, she's saying, their recommendations, no.
Thanks, but no thanks.
I mean, she's a, she's a for-profit and it's, our policy is written as a more of a one-time. Someone had mentioned the church has a fairly large room or the school.
Yeah, there's no reason why she couldn't use, you know, I mean, she'd have to...
Well, she was up there for a while.
Was she?
I don't remember why she left.
Oh, she was doing yoga at the church?
Yeah.
Yep, so...
So the Selectmen, at this point, don't have any desire to, or plans to change the policy that was written?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't know how you feel, Bill. I think we keep it with the nonprofits and...
Well, if it's easy to change the policy, I would be inclined to go that way, but, I mean, if it's a big hassle...
Well, I mean, it's, it's not, certainly not a hassle point, but you gotta remember that, and I'm not sure, I mean, I guess before we went down that route, the question to her would be, is it even going to be, you know, something that she would still continue to do if we don't waive the fee? Because you have to be careful who you waive the fee for, you know what I mean? For the most part, we waive it for the owls because they're nonprofit, but if she's a for-profit, is she gonna have enough people in here to even cover the cost of using the room? So you'd be changing it to allow nonprofits to come in as well and then you would have to change it because it says it's got the one-time envision in there.
Yeah, I don't know, I think bringing a profit in might be opening up a can of worms. I just think, the nonprofits, I mean, that's what, that's what the building's here for, is to help out a nonprofit, you know, and that's what we, that's what we did the plan for.
And it did say that we should probably get input from the voters and the town's liability insurance because, I mean, it could go from yoga to karate to dance, I mean, you know, we could have all types of profit, you know.
Yep, yep. I'd rather see something done if...
Does the fire station have a town?
It's still town, I mean, and so's the, so's the gym, but I'd rather see us try to, if we can find someone out there in TV land to borrow, you know, a phrase from, from the gentleman that was on the planning board. If we can find someone to take over the recs department, 'cause the folk that are handling that now are, you know, are gonna be all done, they retiring out of it, so we need someone to take over the rec department. If we somehow take the rec department and merge it in with the gym building and the gym, maybe they could offer some, offer a class.
Right, 'cause there's gotta be a way and we didn't really, we didn't really say that to MMA, that we have an actual gym that has an aerobics room in it.
Right.
You know, that building use policy, although it's for all-town buildings...
Yeah.
...was specified for this. I mean, we, there's nothing to say you couldn't have another policy for, you know, because we've talked about having the toddlers over there and the...
Right, you could do all kinds of things down there. I mean, if, if someone took over the rec department and they, they ran the gym with the rec department, there's no reason why the rec department couldn't offer a yoga class taught by the same instructor.
Right.
You know, and...
Is there a cement floor in the...
Yeah, there is, but, you know, they'd bring in mats. Bring in your own mats or whatnot for, for yoga.
Is there a cement floor in the...
It's, it's always been.
Yeah, it used to be the fire station.
No, I thought that they had like a, I thought they had a laminate.
It had a laminate floor in it during one of the floods, the laminate, being a laminate floor, you know, particle board, wood, was going back to mother nature and it kinda took care of it, it just disintegrated and that was the end of that and we didn't bother putting anything back in there again, so. Just left it, easy-to-maintain concrete, so. I mean, that, that would be what I'd envision, you know, something like that, but that's nothing we can do, you know, within the next week or two, you know, we, that's a, that's a longer-term plan.
So maybe I'll check with her and see. Bill said she was at the church at one point. I know she talked to the school, I can't remember what the school said.
I don't know.
But...
Yeah. Yep, so...
So, I mean, it kinda sounds like, I mean, Bill might be inclined, you're kinda leaning onto, you wanna bring it up again next week and kinda...
We could bring it up again next week. I don't, like I say, I think to try to do something in here, I just...
Or I can check with the town's insurance company, that may solve everything.
That may solve it right there, yeah, yeah.
We'll start there because...
And the fact that, I mean, we do, we charge what, $50 to rent the room, correct? Or is that a cleaning?
No, it's a $50 deposit and a $50 fee, so they get the deposit back. But the, I suspect that the insurance company would found upon it, so before we really get into the board picking it apart, let's make sure we could even do it, so.
Yep, sounds good.
I'll check with them.
Thanks. Conservation forestry update.
So I just wanted to kinda update you on this, we are still working diligently at this, thanks to Tom Cash and he was kind enough to come in yesterday and go through some Old Town Report books and kind of help me locate all of the stuff that we needed. I've spoken to the attorney once about it, he's reviewing it. It looks like he may be pointing the warrant article in a direction to dissolve the committees and create a new committee. And I haven't had a chance to talk to Tom about possibly coming up with another name or another idea. What gets tricky in this really is the people that currently sit on it, not so much on the conservation committee because they're appointed and the Selectmen can dissolve the committee and be done with them. But when you get into elected officials, you know, we can't just, poof, you're no longer a forest committee member, so.
Right.
We're still working out the details, I hope to have more for you next week.
Okay, great. Radar Speed Trailer.
Radar Speed Trailer. Well, this was kinda exciting, so, people, probably shouldn't say it was my idea, for those people that are gonna get stopped, but we had gotten something in the mail from the main local road center a couple months ago, just basically saying that if you wanna, if your town wants to sign up for the Radar Speed Trailer, you know, to sign up and basically it's a lottery, and I think lottery, I'm like, woo, you know, so we won, so we got, we get it for a couple of weeks. I'm not gonna tell you when or where.
No.
But anyways, and I'll let, we'll let Deputy Shaw be in charge of what road will be on it and he'll talk to you guys if it affects your road.
So if there's any...[1767.12]
I mean, I just, I thought it was kinda, it was kinda like a congratulations. Your community was selected to participate in the DOT Radar Speed Trailer. It goes, it basically says, encloses the schedule, this is kinda funny. Encloses the schedule and contact list for each winning community, that's us. Each community must make arrangements with the previous loner and arrange for a convenient time and place to transfer the Radar Speed Trailer. So Scott?
How long?
Consider this my advance request.
How long do we get it for?
We get it for, I think it's two weeks.
Oh, good.
And we'll be getting it from the town of Burwick. I'm not going to disclose that information, so...
Further information?
I'm guessing we just go down and pick it up? We just hook it onto one of your trucks and bring it back? Yeah, and then of course Chapley gets it from us, so, they'll be easy. Chapley 1-2, it was exciting.
Yep, yep.
No, no, actually, actually, there were, wait a minute. Eighty-four towns have requested it, they picked 16.
Wow.
So we did, we were winners.
Good, yeah.
Sometimes it's nice to...
Pretty good things to have around, I mean...
I mean, it's not like the, the police are gonna be sitting there, right? It's just one of those like they have in Burwick.
Right.
Right, when you get off of Route 4, it's blinking, you know, you're on 85 and a 25, right? It's just saying... No, it doesn't. Not at all.
So for further, further information, contact Jennifer at the Town Hall 35H Road.
I thought it would be fun to see her.
No, I think it's a good thing, I mean, we got, we got some sections in town that would be good to put it in. Deputy Shaw probably is the one who says where it goes.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not gonna do that.
Yeah, that's up to him and, you know, yeah, place it around.
Be a winner, I wanted to win the competition.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
New business, lawn care bids.
Lawn care bids. I guess I'll have to see when you open them, I thought I had one more, but, all right, start with that one. I will tell you that a couple of these people have sent either faxed in workers' comp or faxed in the liability insurance, so if you decide to make a decision tonight, it can be, you know, contingent on that.
Okay. First bid is from K&amp;K Property Management of North Waterboro.
K&amp;K?
K&amp;K. To whom it may concern, this is a proposal between K&amp;K Property Management and the town of Acton for lawn care for the 2016 season, which is from May to November. K&amp;K Property Management will mow, fertilize, rake, do spring and fall cleanups, 35H Road, Public Safety Building, Mary Grant Preserve, and Lincoln School throughout the season. Let's see, the town of Acton will be charged $4,000 for the season. Be mowed, let's see, probably located every seven to 10 days. So it looks like this is for $4,000 flat.
Does it say anything about fertilizer?
There's no, it just says it's included.
Okay.
Yep, they've included some references. And we do have a certificate of liability insurance, which does have workman's comp on it as well. So that's K&amp;K.
Or is that they're gonna mow how often? Every 10 days?
Every seven to 10. Next one?
Thank you.
You're welcome, Bill.
You spelled wrong.
Don't say that. Those are things we don't say on television. He opens and announces who it is.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
This one is from C&amp;D Landscaping of Chapley.
C&amp;D Landscaping.
Yes. Okay, we have, let's see, Town Hall, Public Safety Building, Lincoln School, Mary Grant. Mowing for the whole season, this is for $4,000.
Fertilizer?
That's where I'm getting at now, let's see, this is the price to mow the properties for the whole season, will be $4,000. This is also to reseed, fertilize and lime mulch areas as needed. Let's see, clean up at any given time. Like to have six payments of 666-66. Uh, let's see, says he also mows in Chapley as well, so. Other than that, let's see. Yeah, so it includes, you know, fertilizer and lime and everything. Do have a, do have the proper insurance endorsements and whatnot. Yep. And a list of references, so... Next we have... Insurance paperwork. This is from Ham's Property Service. Bid to the town of Acton for mowing and lawn care services. Services include mowing, weed, mowing, weed whacking, removal of brush and debris, fertilizing, based on 10 to 14 day mowing cycle from May through October. Let's see, the cost per site, May through October. He's got it kinda broken down differently here. Public Safety Building, he's got $2,025. Town Hall's 15, Lincoln School 450, Mary Grant 450. Total services totaling 4425. And let's see, he's got here fertilizing, Town Hall two applications, one spring, one fall, for $400 apiece. So it actually brings the total services to 4825. Forty-eight 25 including fertilizing. So that kinda gives us an apples to apples with the rest.
Can I just take a peek at his?
Except when you get down to the bottom and it says my bid for the, for the sum of $4,200.
Yeah, see, he, and that's what I'm saying, he did that last year.
For all services above. So I guess it's gonna be 40, so he gives you a total price of 4825, but he discounted it.
Right, basically shows what it would cost and then...
Yep, down to 42, so.
So 4,200.
That would be Ham's Property Service.
And we got one more.
It's down to 4,200.
Forty-two. Yeah, he also has the proper insurance certificates and whatnot included. So it's Ham's Property Service for 42. Thank you. Okay, this one is S&amp;B Property Maintenance. Explanation of services. Enclosed, I have prepared what I believe to be a fair and acceptable proposal for the grounds maintenance contact of property stated below. This bid is based on two wenti cuts for the mowing and trimming, yet also includes the raking fertilization program, as well as both spring and fall cleanups as requested by the Town Hall site only. Fertilization was based on simply a spring weed and feed application and fall weed and winterization, as discussed the Town Hall personnel. Season, let's see, April 15th through October 31st, unless otherwise indicated. They had broken it down as well. Let's go to the bottom line on this, 'cause the whole thing just adds up. Their total for the season is $6,000. And like I said, they did break it down, they've got 1,400 for the Town Hall, plus 500 for fertilizing, raking and detaching for 125, spring cleanup 125, fall cleanup 250. Lincoln School was 600, Mary Grant was 1,000, and Public Safety Building was 2,000, total of $6,000, so...
So they have K&amp;K Property for 4,000, C&amp;D Landscaping for 4,000, Ham's Property Services for 4,200, and SB Property Services for 6,000.
Yes. Yep. Let's see, we used Ham for the last year, correct?
We've used Ham.
And we used one of the others, C&amp;D?
C&amp;D Landscaping.
Okay. I believe we have all the proper insurance paperwork in there. Do we wanna make a recommendation on that tonight?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, I mean, we got, you know, two at 4,000, one at 6,000, one at 4,200. The one at 4,200 we've used the last few years.
Well, you used them last year and the year before you used C&amp;D Landscaping and then before that you used Ham's.
You used Ham. We didn't have any issues with Ham last year, did we? I think you did everything.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Yep.
Didn't have any issues with C&amp;D Landscaping either.
No, no, so...
Just saying.
Yep, no, it's fine, so. What would be your recommendation, Bill?
Well, we had, we've already had experience with C&amp;D and it was all right, right?
Yep, and we had experience with Ham.
I was, yeah.
So...
But Robyn didn't do it last year, right?
Yes, he did it last year with, no...
Or the year before.
He didn't do it the year before, C&amp;D did it the year before.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, if, if there was no complaints with C&amp;D, I mean, they are a little bitter, I'd go with them. You have a preference?
I do, actually. Only because I like the, I like the in-town versus the out-of-town. And that's my only thing, is it worth $200 to, to give it to another towner, you know? That's my, that's my only feelings, you know? I know we, you know, I know we haven't had any problems with, with Hams in the last year or so when we used them and... That's just my personal opinion, so...
I know Robyn...
Yeah, I mean, for $200, I don't, I'd just as soon keep Robyn, but...
And we had C&amp;D last year.
Year before.
Robyn last year.
Robyn last year, yep, yep, so...
Everybody was happy with Robyn?
Yeah, we, we, I mean, both companies and...
Yeah, they're both good.
Both companies are very good, they're both good, hard, working men and, and good companies, good family men and, and, you know? I mean, in the past, the board has tried to keep it in-town if they can and, and for $200 is, you know...
If we were talking $500, I think we'd have a different story, but...
Okay, you're talking me into it.
Okay, you wanna make a motion?
Uh, I move that we award the contract to Ham's Property Service in Acton.
I'll second that, any further discussion?
Second.
All in favor? Great. Ham's Property. You got the slips back again, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, billing rates, this would be for the ambulance.
Yep, I gotta, spoke to Tammy Higgins today and she just wanted to know for now, until we get everything situated with our fire chief and assistants and so forth, if you would just authorize her to use the billing rates that she was using for the Acton Ambulance Association until she has time to sit down with her new department heads and figure out which direction you wanted to go in.
Sounds good to me. I know in the past, within the past two or three years, the ambulance association, thanks Scott, Holly. The ambulance association has adjusted those rates, so I would think those rates would be...
She thought they were fair, I asked her how they were in comparison, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
She asked them how, I asked her how they were in comparison and, and she actually thought they were a little high.
Really, yeah.
But I think that I was comparing it to, to her area, but she, you know, she recommended leaving them where they were for now, until we get stable.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt the rates?
I move that we adopt the current rates from last year.
Okay, from the Acton Ambulance.
Right.
Yep, okay, I'll second that, all in favor? Great, thank you. Milton Mills, I, I have that ready, yeah.
Yeah, this is put together by some property owners. The lead lady is Ms. Karen and she's not asking for anything from the town, more of the townspeople if they're interested. She's got everything from the bags being provided to pickup on the side of the road being provided to, she's got all kinds of donations and...
Yep, this is from Milton Mills Road. Acton cleanup weekend for April 1, 2, and 3, roadside cleanup only. So this is a, like I say, she's got, it's like a Roma Joes has donated the bags for her cleanup and the bags will be picked up Sunday, April 3rd, leave the bags beside the road. This is for the roadside cleanup only.
That's this weekend, right, yeah?
That would be, yes. Yep, great.
So they're just looking for volunteers?
I assume that are just the people on Milton Mills Road to basically police their own area and...
A little of both, Bill.
Whoever wants to go down by and, and give a hand, so. Good, other business. Seems nothing there, public comment? Nothing from the public. Announcements. Public hearing for the planning board, April 7th at 7:00 PM. This is on 4.2.2.6 that we've been going through the last couple of years. Once again, it's April 7th at 7:00 PM and that is upstairs or down? Do you know, Jennifer?
Um...
Yeah, it's here at the Town Hall complex.
I think we're having it upstairs, it depends on what happens with the vote on the 5th.
Okay. School election dates, once again, April 5th is the vote at the school and April 12th will be the...
Referendum.
Referendum, here at the Town Hall and that's eight to eight.
Correct. And it's important to keep reminding the townspeople that you're voting, you're not only voting to rectify whatever budget is approved on April 5th, but you're also being asked if you wanna continue the process for another three years. So there's two ballot questions on there, so...
True.
Certainly something to get some information on in advance if you're not familiar with it.
We have a liquor license public hearing coming up on April 5th at 5:00 PM. That'll be just before our selectman's meeting up here. And Roamick Orchards public hearing on April 26th at 6:00 PM. That's all for the announcements, I just have one quick one and that is, last, last Saturday, we had a budget workshop with the department heads and the warrant finance committee. That went very well, I just wanted to thank all the department heads that came to the workshop and everyone has a very good, good budget presented and we shall see where that goes. Anything else? Anything, Bill?
Nope.
Anything else, Joe?
No, sir.
No?
I'll move re-adjourn.
I'll second, all in favor? Great.